Good evening. We all call to order the July 14th Danby Select Board Meeting. And please rise and join me to listen to the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dreya, would you please call the roll?
Abbott.
Here.
Pollard.
Haynes.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Beth, would you please read the remote access statement?
Procedure for remote attendance at select board meetings. Remote access to select board meetings, while not required by law, is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town's citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Businesses conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees, in person or remote, who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. And I'll just say that that is on the toolbar for remote participants at the bottom of your screen under Reactions. People will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. The online host, which tonight is me, will alert the chair to the presence of remote questions or comments. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will again be muted. General ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. Procedures for the use of this online platform and the above standards should be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting. And I just wanted to say that for remote access people who are dialing in, the raise hand function is a star nine and the muting, unmuting yourself is star six when you are asked to do that. For people who are in the room and may be speaking this evening, if you could really speak up toward that microphone because otherwise the remote participants can't hear you.
And thank you, Beth. And could you tell us who is participating remotely, please?
Let's see. Right now, we have Annette Smith and Chris Hardaway.
Thank you.
With Terry Harper.
Okay. Our next item would be to set the agenda. And two things have come about that we need to include. And I would put this first one down under the Rutland County Sheriff Contract, just above Old Business. And that would be a motion to approve the local emergency management plan. And I have also had a request for an executive session for two different matters, one being a personnel matter and one being a possible real estate negotiation.
And I think we ought to add just a short snippet on that floodplain meeting that I went to, or the flood insurance meeting.
Okay. That's different than the hazard mitigation?
Yes.
Okay. So where would you like to put that, Steve?
Anywhere as you want. Doesn't matter. It's just, there's a couple of things on there I think we need to get out in the open, get working on.
Okay.
And I didn't think of it until I was looking through my notes.
Should we put it right before the road commissioner's report?
Sure.
And we're going to call this floodplain?
No, it's flood insurance.
Flood insurance. Discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda?
Where would we put the executive branch?
Right down before we adjourn. We do not anticipate taking any action in the executive session, so I didn't feel it was worth having people hang around for.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of setting the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Dreya and then Hope.
I just wanted to let everyone know that the planning commission will be having a non-regular scheduled meeting on August 4th at 6:00 PM here. Agenda will be posted accordingly. And I will coordinate with Beth about making sure we have remote access for that as well. And we're just going to piggyback on the same access that you guys have been using.
And the purpose of the meeting?
We were contacted by Samantha Pierce from the Candace Coalition, and she wanted to do a presentation to us about it. And then I'll report back at the next select board meeting. It's kind of why we tried to do it right before.
Okay. Thank you. Hope?
I have a question about whether we should speak now. We have a couple more things we wanted to say about the motion inclusion. We didn't have a discussion last time. So should we speak now? Or do you guys want to?
No, this would be your time.
Just wait when we?
Speak.
Oh, speak. And speak a little more loudly. Or take a few steps forward.
Yeah.
And then I do have one person on here after Hope.
Okay.
All right. So Lauren and I are here to answer your questions, but I just wanted to say a couple of things that we didn't get to say last time. Just three things, actually. The first is that the language that I gave you for the declaration is not set in stone. You can adapt it to anything, to what you feel comfortable with. And that's what they did in clariement. And the way they did that is they appointed a committee who took the problem language that's said it and rewrote it and took it back to the board and worked it until the board was comfortable with the language. So I wanted to make that clear. And Lauren and I would be happy to be on that committee if that was something we wanted to do. And the second thing is the three authors of the declaration, one or more have, could come on a Zoom during their August meeting or September meeting if you wanted to get more information about the, and I'm sure they could explain it much better than I have explained it. So you probably would get a lot more information. And then the final thing is, I just wanted to reiterate that it's a grassroots statewide project. And we're trying to get all towns of the 247 or maybe it's 246. I'm not sure. But anyway, last month I said that we had 50. Now we have 58. And I wanted to point out that all of our neighbors have already adopted it. So we've got Kenneth, Paul, Dorset, Manchester, Mount Taper, and Monmouth. Five. I think I got everybody. So those were the three things that I just wanted to give you. And Lauren had a couple of things she didn't also. She's also been working, been working together. Thank you.
So I was thinking of last time, the presentation that Hope made when she had talked to Brad about it before the meeting, saying that we wanted to remove this board. And if I remember it right, you said, you know, I feel like we're inclusive already. Wasn't it a comment, something like that?
I do.
So what I'm thinking, if we don't have an inclusion statement on the books now, how would someone from out of town or out of state know that Danby is an inclusive town? So I think having it on the books is a good way for us to know, to say, we've made this decision and we'd like to include new people to the towns that commit. So that was one thought I had. I just wanted to read you a quote from the guidelines that I thought was really good. "A welcoming town thrives because it encourages diversity, which brings new vitality to the economy and increased tax revenue." So a really good reason to consider adopting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. And we have someone at home?
Yes. Annette Smith. And I will... Let's see if this works. Are you ready to go, Annette? Annette, you might have to unmute yourself as well. And we can't hear you. Sorry, it's not working, Annette. Ah, the remote participants can hear Annette. We can't hear Annette. I don't understand why that is.
Your volume is up, correct?
Well, let's just see.
Just trying, you know?
Yes. I'm very sorry about that.
Did you type her question?
I'm not sure.
Or would you invite her to call in? And we'll put her on the conference?
Yes. Okay. So sorry.
293-5136. And the treasurer's?
What is it, 293?
25440. 0. 5440.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
So sorry, everybody. They're in there. There we go.
Hello, Annette. I will put you on speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, you're all set.
Sorry for the technical problems.
Might be mine.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
So I wanted to speak in support of the inclusion statement. I think, I agree that I feel Danby is a very inclusive town already. And so it doesn't seem like it's a big deal. And since all our surrounding towns have done it, we would sort of stick out if we don't do it. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is the use of new business. And I don't know if you saw, I did a post on Front Porch Forum about it after your last meeting. The Secretary of State's guidance and Vermont League of Cities and Towns guidance is that action items should be warned. And so votes shouldn't be taken under new business. And you've done it a couple of times. And so is this, is this something that is going to happen regularly? Or could you just agree to not, not take votes when you bring something up on new business that's not warned on the agenda in advance?
My opinion on that, Annette, is that when things come in at the last minute, like we've had two of them on this agenda, they need to be acted on. And to put it off for a month harms other people's schedules. And your... Excuse me, I'm still speaking. And your comment about the tree that was taken down, I found particularly obstructionist because this is something that we had a good deal if we acted quickly. And it was not a lot of money. It was a potentially dangerous situation, and we acted on it. And that's why we have new business and many agendas say, any other items to come before the board. As you pointed out, this is guidance. It is not law. Thank you.
So tonight, you added things to the agenda?
Correct.
Which I think is the appropriate thing to do. And then people who are able to participate in the meeting tonight will have, you know, some understanding at the beginning of the agenda that you're going to be taking it up. And so if there are items that are of interest, then people can stay and listen to that discussion and hear the vote at the time. But when it comes at the end of the meeting, as it did last time, and also the other vote that I recall was the time that you decided not to have remote meetings anymore. That was taken up under new business. It wasn't a warned item, and it was voted on at the end of the meeting. And so had that been, for instance, brought up at the beginning of the meeting, people might have stayed and listened to the discussion and had the opportunity to weigh in. So there's a, there's a distinction that I'm trying to make that what you did tonight, I think, is appropriate. You had items to add. You added them to the agenda. If I have any interest in them, I'll stay and I'll listen. If I don't, I can go home. But in new business, it's like, who knows what's going to happen that you're going to take action on? Do you understand the difference?
Okay. I see your point. Yes, I do.
And I have fixed the, the access situation online, so the next person who needs to speak will not need to call in.
Can we test this? Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. Hang up the phone now. And speak.
Do you hear me through this way?
Yes. Yay. Sorry about the earlier.
It's something that I just feel like, in the interest of, you know, somebody, often, and the reason for a public comment at the beginning is somebody might come in with an issue wanting you to know about, and then they get to go home. But when you have it at new business at the end and you don't know what's going to come up, and then you got, it might take action on. So I'm trying to be respectful here. I'm going to give you guys a hard time. I'm just speaking as a member of the public who would like to see the public's infected too.
Okay. Your point is well taken. Thank you.
Thank you for my, the opportunity to speak about it.
And you said we have someone else?
I do not have anyone else right now.
Tracy?
I was wondering, do you have the roadside molder fixed yet?
Yes.
How much did that cost?
I don't know if we got, did we get a bill?
What did it be from Capital?
Yeah, it'd be from Capital Tractor.
So I've only received two bills. And that was for the purchase of the tractor and then the $3,200.
We haven't been billed out for it yet. We won't get that probably till the end of the month.
And why are we paying for it anyway? Weren't they?
Because we bought the tractor, as is where it is, meaning there is no guarantee on it. It was a used tractor, which is why we're able to purchase the tractor and mower for under $30,000.
Yes, and then you have it fixed?
No. We had it serviced. We did not have it fixed. We had them change the oil on the tractor and the mower so that it had fresh oil and fresh filters in it and to charge the air conditioner before we started using it. So when it got here, theoretically, it would be ready to run. But there was no guarantee on any of it because it was a used tractor at roughly $120,000 less than if we had purchased a brand new one with a warranty. We felt that that was a good option for the town. And roughly, I'm going to take a step out on a limb and say it's going to cost us about $5,000 to get that mower fixed. Because the hydraulic pump for that mower is about $3,000 without labor.
I was under the impression that what was going to be fixed, it wasn't going to be, it was going to be serviced. I thought I had heard that there was a hydraulic leak when you bought it.
There was a hydraulic leak that they fixed, but that was on the tractor itself. That was not on the mower. That was on the tractor. They fixed the hydraulic leak that we asked them to, and they serviced both machines so that everything had fresh fluids, was greased, and ready to work. And it worked the way it was supposed to for four hours. And then the front pump went bad on it. Unfortunately, that's a consumable item that we have no say in when they go.
But I will also add that that is a common problem, whether it's a new one or a used one. That pump is put in a lot of stress. And people that I have talked to also say that you get so many years out of them and then they have to be replaced anyways. So it's not something that was just, you know, it was bad. It's, it's a wear item on that particular unit.
Any other public comment? Okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the select board meeting of June 9th, 2022.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
What can you have it?
Motion is made and seconded. Is there discussion in the form of additions, deletions, corrections? Not hearing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, I will entertain a motion to accept an offer of $400 for the used slate that is stacked behind the building here. That's the slate that came off the backside of this roof when we replaced it with metal. It's been sitting there for three years now. We'll keep a dozen or so just in case we need a replacement on the front. But it's taking up space and not...
I'll make a motion. So if it sits there, it's probably just going to get damaged.
Yep. Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not hearing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor of accepting an offer of $400 for the used slate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I will entertain a motion relative to the statement of inclusion. Is there a motion relative to the statement of inclusion? Is there a motion relative to the statement of inclusion? I do not hear a motion.
Can we ask questions at this point or?
There's no motion, so there's no discussion.
We can't discuss. Okay. So if you need more information, because really, everybody around us has it and it's something that we already do and it's just another list we could be on to help the tax base.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thank you for the effort you put into this.
May I make a suggestion? If the board chooses, it could make a motion to have the presentation made by that person that Hope was suggesting. You wouldn't have to vote, vote on the motion to have the...
Adopt it.
Adopt it. But you could make a motion to have this presented, your presentation, at the next meeting.
They said it would be about 15 minutes, just to give you a sense of time, if folks thought that would be helpful, to just hear more about it. I'm sure it would be helpful. I'm sure they would have more information since they're the ones that authorized it.
There's, there's no motion, so there's no discussion. Did any board members have any other comments on this as far as putting something on the agenda next month? Okay. We are going to move forward. We have a regional planning report from Michelle, I believe.
Yes. So at the regional meeting, at the end of last month, I believe.
It's 21st?
21st, yes. Most of it was just business organization, you know, who's in this seat now, who's in that seat now. The two things I pulled away that I thought were interesting, and you probably already know, that they have road commissioner and municipal official training on July 26th and 27th. And simply that they were removing two dams in Dorset. However, I missed, my notes were not so great because I couldn't read where exactly that was. But two dams in Dorset being removed. Other than that, it was all structural. Nothing of any interest. I have to you guys.
Speaker, dams?
She just said dams. And honestly, my scribbles were awful when I went back to look to see what I wrote. I just know there are two dams in Danby, or Dorset, and they're out. That's all I got. And if you want to go to some training. The rest of it was all just who's sitting in this seat, who's sitting in that seat.
Right. So I guess if anybody has interest in the dam removal in Dorset...
I can look back, but when I went and grabbed my book right before I came, I was folded myself for my poor handwriting and apologized.
Probably something to do with old mills, I would assume.
They didn't elaborate. The girl went right quick through it, and so I wrote right quick what she said. And I left it at that, thinking that I would absorb more. Obviously, I didn't. But...
Well, I thank you for...
I'm sure they're heard by the state because we don't know what that means.
Yeah. A lot goes into that. Okay.
Michelle, the chief.
I see you in your clothes. Thank you for not hitting my jersey.
Any questions for Michelle? Okay. We will move on then with our treasurer's report.
Give you guys a, the final report for this year 2022. You guys can just review it. And if you have any questions, please let me know. I wanted to let you guys know about Dump Day. We collected $872. Our total expense was $1,283. And the revenue and some of the expense hit the fiscal year 2022 and some of the expense hit the new year. So just so that you know, it's not matched up.
It's what?
It's not matched up. Like, all the expenses didn't hit in the same year.
Once again, we typically do not expect to make money on Dump Day. It's a service that helps to keep our roadsides clean.
So the Brock statements, the Brock loan statements, they were sent out this week. We have kind of tweaked the format and we wanted to get a better statement out there. So those were now out this week.
And we have five outstanding loans? Is that correct?
There's four.
Four?
Yes. On June 30th, I wrote a check to the retirement, the new retirement plan, Mission Squares. So that was exciting to get that taken care of. Our auditors, our inside auditors, Maureen has been auditing, and she has done July through March.
Have we had any word from the other two? As to whether or not they'll be participating?
Not that I know of. I did not have a chance to check with Maureen.
Okay. Any questions?
No, not at all.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Okay. So next, we have on the agenda a flooding... Okay, so next we have on the agenda a flood insurance discussion, so I'll turn it over to Steve.
So the meeting that I went to in the office here, basically, they told me that we need to start giving out permits if anybody wants to build anything in the floodplain, like if they want to put up a garage or whatever. Who who is they? Well, it's Kyle, that guy that I had a meeting with.
Oh.
This is the one that skipped out on you. I don't remember his last name, I didn't write it down. They, basically what they said was, because forty years ago, we got the federal flood insurance in town, guidelines have been changed and whatnot, and we're supposed to be issuing permits anytime somebody builds a structure inside of the floodplain.
Even though we did not adopt a floodplain management.
This is all to do with the flood insurance through the government. And he told me that FEMA was considering not paying for the Parker Bridge, because there was never a permit for it through, from the town. Because we didn't give it a permit for the flood insurance program. But none of us knew we needed a permit. And he suggested that we got ahold of Stephanie at the Regional Planning Commission to help us get a permit in place.
Kyle Medash.
Yes, there you go, I know it began with him.
From A N R slash D E C.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What was that, in A N R?
So his last name is Medash, N E D A S H, and he's from the A N R slash D E C.
Thank you.
And he also suggested that we should send out a postcard or something informing the people who own land in the floodplain already that if they want to do any buildings or renovations, that's the other thing. If they want to do any buildings or renovations to their house, that they need to contact us for a permit. Because if they do renovations over fifty percent of the house's value, they're supposed to get a permit. That way, it will be covered under the federal flood insurance.
Is there a model permit?
He said to contact Stephanie for that, that she'd be able to help us with setting up whatever type of permit we want to set up.
That Stephanie Burke loan from?
Yep.
Did he happen to say if that was a simple permit, or is it?
He made it sound like we could make it just as convoluted as we want it to be. But we, I think we can make it fairly simple as well. But we would have to. If Brad wanted to put up a little building below his house, then we would need to know what it was made of, how it was secured to the ground, and have a little picture drawn of it, and just a list of materials used and how it was secured and the size of it.
So our choice of the permit would be the difference from being engineered to tell me what it is and how you're doing it, and it's okay.
Right, and.
Big area then.
And somebody, depending on where it is, somebody would actually have to go on site and look to say, yeah, you, there's no issue here, or you want to put something there?
Well, did they ever resolve whether we're using flat maps or topographical maps?
Remapping everything he thought either in twenty-three or twenty-four to where the maps, he said, would be more accurate, but when they do the mapping, it would be like that map where we would have a chance to go in and say, no, we don't agree with this, to be able to adjust it to what we feel is more accurate.
Because I know a lot of people have suffered that were required to have flood insurance when in fact they're way up on top of a cliff, because the map just said X number.
Right.
Back from the center of the brook.
And he did, I mentioned that to him, and that's when he said that they would be remapping either in twenty-three or twenty-four.
So to me, it doesn't make any sense to have a permit until we have accurate maps, but maybe I don't see things correctly.
No, I agree with that. It's kind of hard to say this is a floodplain when it may not actually be to begin with.
We have a whole number of properties right up through here.
I'm sure we're gonna get forced into it at some point, but I guess as long as we can. I think we're, yeah, like you said, you get the new maps that are hopefully better defined.
Yeah.
And if we could work into it at that time, it might be more.
That's what they need to do, they need to have topographic maps.
Yeah.
But we also may need to show that we're doing something.
Well, I'm gonna say we may have to.
Because we don't want to have somebody deny the claim because we're not working on it as well.
Should we contact Stephanie?
I think we should contact Stephanie and have a couple of meetings with her to.
Start.
Start, start to at least figure out what we need for a permit and and draft it the way we want it, not not what might feel your things fits Danby.
I agree with that.
Would you like to contact her?
Yeah.
What is her last name?
Borq, B O R Q U E, something like that.
Okay, B O R O Q U E.
That's why I didn't try and say it, because I knew you'd ask to spell it.
I don't have any correspondence from her in front of me, so. Okay, anything else on that, Steve?
No, I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
The V O U R.
V O U R.
Q U E.
Okay. Borq.
Okay, we do not have our road commissioner here this evening, but we do have a number of very important items that need to be acted on. The first one would be a motion to sign the State of Vermont Grant Agreement for Town Highway Class Two roadway program. And that is a grant agreement in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to do paving.
I'll make a motion, we sign it.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Under discussion, I think that we might want to consider where we're going to do the paving. I know I've had a discussion with Tom, and he's talking about finishing up Brook Road here and over on Lily Hill where the pitch is wrong, and we've had those accidents going down the hill and also paving into the Flower Brook Bridge, because from the bridge to the Danby-Pawat Road is just a gravel road. So that does not get plowed at the same time that the hard surface gets plowed, and it doesn't get salted. So if we pave it, then that whole section will be open and those people leaving for work in the morning on a snowy day have a good chance of making it out to the main road.
Look, how much work would it take to change, so you run up what they call the shortcut and make that that main access, instead of right there at the bottom of the hill?
Well, that's.
That's what we should look at at the same time.
That's that's a good discuss, I mean, I, it's not going to be something that's going to be covered under this grant, but yes, there has been a lot of conversation.
Dangerous intersection.
Very dangerous intersection.
Where you go up where that shortcut's wider, you got a much better view of traffic coming here now.
Exactly. And we've had discussions about the evergreen trees that are across from it there, but they're way back on private land, yet they obscure the view for people coming down from Pawat. So there's really nothing we can do about that. I completely agree with you. And we still, we have not thrown up that road, but it's gonna take some money to fix it up.
I was wondering if that's something we should look at, look, at least go look at it.
I'd be in favor.
Get an idea of what it would take.
Say a day and we'll go. Free tomorrow.
I can make it work tomorrow.
Or probably even next Friday, I'd be around this, or a Saturday, you know, if you guys want to look at that.
Yeah, next Friday would be better for me, but if you guys want to do it tomorrow, that's fine too.
Crazy right now anyways.
Yeah.
Saturday better or?
What are you thinking tomorrow, Friday in the morning?
Brad said he's not good with this week.
Yeah, this weekend, tomorrow and through this weekend, I'm busy. Next week, I have some open days. Saturday is the twentieth, I believe. I think Saturday of next week, I have something also.
Yeah, Saturday and next week, I'm not available.
I know I'd be around Friday next week. Which is the twenty-first, twenty-second?
I can do it probably in the morning.
Yeah, I mean, morning's probably better for me too.
Yeah, mornings would be better for me, if you want to try to do something next Friday morning. Whatever works for you, Steve, you gotta get out of.
It's a good time for you, nine thirty?
Nine, nine thirty, whatever.
Nine o'clock?
That work?
Nine, okay, you're done by nine?
I'll be done here at nine o'clock.
Meet by the bottom or meet?
Meet by the bridge. Well, yeah, because the damage is down by the Flower Brook Bridge.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess since so many of us are going to look at it, we will have to warn that as.
As a special meeting.
Okay.
That'd be the twenty-second?
Yes.
Yes, Friday the twenty-second, nine o'clock. Okay, so back to this grant for paving, I believe we have a motion that was made and seconded, don't we?
Yes.
Any more discussion on that? All those in favor of signing it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't hear any, so the motion carries unanimously. Then we go on to discussing the proposed drug and alcohol policy for CMV operators. Has everybody? Oh, wait a second.
You, you missed the maintenance repair.
Sorry. Contract for highway maintenance and repair. This is another opportunity to get some money. We the undersigned, we understand that this contract contains an agreement to arbitrate after signing this document, which we understand that we will not be able to bring a lawsuit concerning any dispute that may arise, which is covered by arbitration agreement, unless it involves a question of constitutional or civil rights. Instead, we agree to submit such dispute to an impartial arbitrator. So if we sign it, that's what we're agreeing to. And the provisions of this contract are severable, and if a court competent jurisdiction holds any portion of this contract unconstitutional or invalid, the remainder of the contract will not be affected. So it, it talks about contract documents, terms, legal parameters, scope of services. This has been emailed to you, so I don't know that I really need to read it all. Is there, well, first of all, is there a motion to sign the contract?
I'll make the motion, we sign it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, so it can be discussed now. So it's basically just a procedural document for highway maintenance and repair.
Doesn't apply to us. Doesn't apply to us. Because it's for municipalities that contract out their highway maintenance.
Yeah, I was.
Says it right in the first paragraph here. This is the way I'm reading it.
I was understanding it when I read it, it's for people that we would hire to do our work.
Well, this is a direct result of what VLCT has given us based on the possibility of the workman's comp claim. So basically, if we don't have this in place, they're not going to help if there's any kind of accident or.
Gotcha.
It's becoming very difficult to have any kind of volunteer service. People need to be either independent contractors or on the town payroll, and that's what this is speaking to.
So how does that affect any of us in the winter time when we jump in a truck or loader and we go out and do work for the town? Are we still covered being selectmen, or do we have to have that contract in place to cover us?
I am still not perfectly clear on that, but from what I've been hearing, it sounds like. like you need to be on the town payroll, which of course, as a select person you are.
But is that going to hold up because we're, we're not on the payroll as road employees?
Right.
We're stipend as...
Right.
A lot of gray area.
Right. And I'm just wondering if this is what is supposed to be covering us now so that we're all protected, or...
We're just opening up a big can of...
Or we open up something that we don't want to be opening up. I mean, I hate to do it to Mike, but I would say give that to Mike and let him...
I was going to say, can we table this?
Yeah, I was just going to say we can table this. And I think that's probably what we need to do, because this whole insurance thing is becoming very difficult. So, a motion...
I'll make the motion that we table it.
I'll second it. Okay, motion to table is made and seconded. There's no discussion on the motion to table. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 So the contract is tabled. Now, did you want to review that more? Okay. Okay, and then you tell me if you want that on the agenda for August.
I will read that.
And if you feel that you should have discussion with the town attorney, please do so.
Okay.
So next we have a proposed policy for drug and alcohol testing. We're just discussing this, it's not an action item to give you...
We had, don't think.
No.
Oh.
So did I.
We used to.
Tom, well, we do it. The VLCT does it. They are supposed to like pop in randomly and do it, but we have nothing on paper that speaks to it. And once again, after the recent incident, they have descended upon us like flies or locusts.
I thought that...
Have one of these.
All CDL holders fall under that drug test?
They apparently do, and the insurance company can send either the person doing the drug test or can say it's so-and-so's turn to go be drug tested. They need to do it, but we don't actually have anything on paper.
I think every company is supposed to have their own plan.
Um...
Or be enrolled in like where they used to enroll in TNT and go under that blanket. I'm trying to remember who we're enrolled with, because it's always just been through VLCT, because I remember when I was plowing, we get a call one day, come back to the office, and the dad would sit here waiting.
Mm-hmm.
But it was always just done through the insurance company.
Right.
It was never formal.
Right.
I can't answer that question. We, we're, being a small company like we are, we're piggybacking on a different company. And I almost thought it was the town. Because we've been getting called all the time, and actually dad got called yesterday. Can't say who it was.
Is it okay if I speak quick?
Yes, yes, you might be able to help us.
I can't, we go under Vermont Truck and Bus Association, but I'm wondering, is this policy we're talking about, is it that, if you recall, I gave you a piece of paper and said you had to sign it, and I had to save it in my thing, and you looked at it and you said, "This is dumb." And I said, "I agree." It's just you agreeing that you're going to take your drug test when we tell you to. Remember that paper?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is this that? Do you just need a form that the guys sign off on and say, "We agree to this policy, we're all on the same page, I'm not going to do drugs and drink when I drive?" Because if that's the case, I have this ridiculous form to sign.
The, the employees need to sign that...
This has more than a sentence in that.
They acknowledge that they have received a copy of this policy and that basically they can be drug tested at any time. It's a 19-page document. This is a model. They're saying that the print that's in italics should be customized to fit our town.
Would you like a copy of our...
We would love a copy of your one-page...
Because it's the one that Vermont Truck and Bus Company said that we can change or we can stick with this, and it was literally one page. And it's, it's all there. I mean, it's, it's so straightforward, I don't know why they make it a 19-page document.
Because...
If our drivers make money when they have lots to talk about.
Some lawyer wrote that.
I'd like you a copy of our one-page one, that you may look over and maybe use to know that.
Okay, so why don't we revisit this again in August after we've had a chance to look at some other sample policies?
Yeah, makes sense.
So next is the hazard mitigation plan. I've put the map up on the wall. I trust everybody's had a chance to look at the questions, look at the areas in question. And if you have recommendations, we should talk about that and let Stephanie Bork know our intentions about either keeping it or modifying it.
I think it needs a lot of modifying.
A lot of modifying.
Yeah. Well, a lot of what she's got is flooding areas, I don't see how they're going to flood.
I don't either.
Right.
I come down looking at it today, stood there for half an hour looking at it.
The area in front of Smokey House, I mean, that's ridiculous.
On Scottsville.
Yeah, that's not going to happen. But those were in trouble.
Only chance of it's right there below my road on Baker Brook, and that's not on that map.
Oh, right on the corner.
Where it washed out twice in the last 40 years.
So how do you wish to proceed on this? Do you want to, I'm not sure about some of the members who were on the committee.
Should we get Stephanie to come down and review it with us so we could get the changes maybe directly made?
I'm, I'm in favor of that. She likes to work through the committee, but we've had difficulty with some of the committee members, health issues and...
I know, we said last meeting we wanted to be directly involved so we could get that. I think that would probably be the way to go.
Okay, do you think we should just do it on the August meeting, or should we have a special meeting? I can't see it taking a whole lot of time, I mean, we're familiar with it.
I wouldn't think it would take a lot of time, but then I don't know how, what she's going to do. I guess we can visit it at the August meeting and if it's going to take. A lot of time we can decide to go to a special meeting for it. That makes sense.
If we can get her for the August meeting, I think that'd be a good thing.
Invite her to...
We have a couple other questions to talk to her about anyway.
Yeah.
So we get her here.
Right. Hopefully, we can get her started on that permit.
Yeah, yeah, we can just use, get her, if we can get her here, if she can't come, then I'm coming. Get a meeting with her anyways and go over all this stuff.
I guess we could check with her schedule too and see if we need to...
Yeah.
Call a special meeting to fit her.
So we also have a hazard mitigation possibility of a grant, and the deadline for that is Friday, September 30th. All projects have to be submitted by then, and this round of funding is eligible to receive 90% federal cost sharing with only a 10% local match. So we, we would want to move on this rather quickly, because if there's areas we want to fix, then we can get it paid for 90%.
Right. Is that covering like the stone in the ditches? Is that what that grant's for? Because I think that's part of your hazard mitigation is to, or replace some of these ditches.
Eligible projects include property buyouts with flood or landslide risk, floodplain restoration, culvert or bridge upsizing, road relocation or evaluation, floodproofing of non-residential structures, property evaluations, planning activities, and generators for critical facilities. So it doesn't really sound like the, the road...
No.
... business. And...
Unless we've got a bridge or culvert that we're...
Right. Again, this is a woman named Stephanie Smith who represents Vermont Emergency Management and is more than willing to discuss any potential projects with us.
Wonder if we could use some of that money to put a new culvert in on the shortcut road?
Oh, isn't that a good idea?
Is that something that has to be signed now or can...
By Friday, September 30th.
All right, why don't we sit on that until next meeting and maybe we can come up with something when we look at the shortcut road to where we could use some money there?
Good. Sounds good.
Because I know that one culvert there is going to have to be replaced.
Mm-hmm. Now, we have a fellow over on Danby Mountain Road that wants to have a driveway permit approved, and Tom likes to approve them, but he is not here, and I know the fellow wants to get going on his driveway. Larry Bovee has looked at it and said it's okay.
Do you want to take a peek at it?
This one just before Scottsville, right where you're saying.
It is Scott.
Yeah, well, or it's some, yeah. I didn't stop one of them by, I've known by a couple times, but compared to a lot of driveways I see going into town, it looks like it's pretty well aligned with what it should be.
Yeah, I think so, I saw it.
Larry's doing it, knows what they're doing right.
Yeah, Larry thinks it's going to be all right, I'm, I'm not worried about it.
Look at it?
I'm good, you don't see it?
I'll take a look at it, but I, I agree with Steve, if Larry's happy with it, I mean, he's the one's...
So entertain a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion we approved it permit.
I'll second it.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, do you want to notify our other participant for the executive session? Be here in like... Uh, town authorized agent. Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the Rutland County Sheriff contract as modified. I did send you folks the, the modified contract, and the best they can do is...
We'll be headed in.
Increase their patrol time by four hours a week. That's how their staffing works out.
So would that go from 10 to 14?
14.
I'll make the motion we signed the contract.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so it's July 14th. And while this is being passed around for everybody to sign, we can talk about the local emergency management plan, which basically hasn't changed very much. Again, it's a rather weighty document of...
There is a change that needs to be made.
Seven pages, I have a lot of topic.
No, someplace in here, it's listed Doug White as the treasurer and, or present treasurer. Who was it? Douglas White, treasurer. It'd be important to get ahold of Jen instead of Doug.
I would say, I think so. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussions would include the correction of the current treasurer. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion is carried. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Not hearing any. I will entertain a motion to enter executive session for personnel and real estate matters.
I'll make a motion we go into executive session.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to enter executive session at 8:10 PM. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.